I would like to call to order the April 15th, 2024 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome, everyone. First up, if you would, please stand and join me with in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please join me in a moment of silence for our invocation. Thank you. Okay, first up is the approval or correction of the minutes. Commissioners, you all have a copy of those before you. Do I hear a motion to amend or to approve the minutes as presented?
Chairman, I'll move for approval as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to approval of the agenda. You all have a copy of that before you as well. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the changes on page 10? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we are happy to have our youth commissioner with us tonight. If you would, key up your mic and introduce yourself and tell us where you go to school and a little bit about you. We would appreciate it.
Hello, everybody. My name is Anna McCauley, and I'm a student at Mount Pleasant High School. Aside from youth commissioners, I'm really active in the 4-H program and FFA program.
Great, welcome. We're glad to have you with us tonight, Anna. Okay, we move now to recognitions and presentations. First up, from Active Living in Parks, Older Americans' Month proclamation, and we're happy to have Londa Strong to read that proclamation.
Thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to be here and see you all, but most of all, it's a pleasure working with all the volunteers, excuse me, that we have. Myra Bumgardner is the chair of our Active Living in Parks Senior Center Council, and she is here to read the proclamation for us.
Great, thank you.
Good evenings. Good to see everybody. Thank you. And I encourage everybody to listen closely. Some very valuable words I'm about to read, I think. Beautifully written proclamation. Older Americans' Month 2024. Whereas, May is Older Americans' Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Cabarrus County older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. And whereas, through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas, older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas, Cabarrus County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities. Reflecting our commitment to inclusivity and connectedness, and now, therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2024 to be Older Americans' Month. This year's theme, powered by connection, emphasizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connection on the well-being and health of older adults in our community. We call upon all residents to join us in recognizing the contributions of our older citizens and promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. I think we have a video now that we're going to share.
And I've always ended a place to go when my wife passed away. I used to be a pretty heavy graker and smoker, but the Lord took it all the way from me. And I was asking the Lord to help me find a nice place that I don't have to run any ball joint. And one day, I was talking to one of my neighbors that comes down here, and he invited me down here. And I've been down here ever since. Sometimes I come down here twice a day because I go back home, I get along some, and I just come on back down here and shoot pool. I just love to shoot pool. I'm 76 years old, and this is my life. I just stay active and try to stay busy. I was really enthused with this place down here, because everybody down here is friendly. We have a good time, good fellowship, and it's just a good environment. And, you know, that's what the world needs now, is a good environment. It's just a good place to come. I wish I'd known it a long time ago. I'd have been coming down here. In fact, I'd have brought my wife down here.
So talk to me about the senior games. Are you going to participate in the?
Yes, ma'am, I sure am. I'm gonna try my darndest to win. I'm working on it. That's why I come up here and shoot pool.
So, right at the senior games, and you win, what's one thing you want to tell your wife while you hold your medal?
Honey, I'm gonna give all the credit to you, because she didn't want me to shoot pool no beer joints. So, I'll come down here to the senior session, and one win for you down here.
That was Steve Wilhelm. Steve Wilhelm started coming to the Active Living, the Senior Center, to shoot a little pool. But, as you can see, he found much more, in fact, he says he found a family. And that's, I encourage all residents of Cabarrus County to come to the Senior Center, come to the Active Living Center. There's something there that will enhance these golden years. You know, it may be a little competition, it may be arts and crafts, it may be moving a little more, but you'll leave there, I promise, with a little more pep in your step and a brighter smile on your face. There are lots, May would be the perfect month. There are arts and crafts, there are line dancing, line-a-thon, dance-a-thons, there's chair volleyball tournaments, there's an indoor baseball tournament, there's a scrabble competition. So, about anything that you can think of that will test you is being offered. So, all you have to do is call the Active Living Center and talk to them, and they'll sign you up. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Myra.
Can I add one thing?
Absolutely.
I'm happy to report that Mr. Wilhelm was a medal winner in pool. This was taped before, but he did win a medal. I believe he was, he might have been gold, but I think he was silver.
Great. Congratulations to Mr. Wilhelm. Yes. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion that we adopt it as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And thank you for that presentation. Okay, we move now to item two from the Fred Wye McConnell, American Legion Post. They have a presentation, and we are happy to have Tom Faggart and some of his associates here. If you would, come to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. If you would, please, could you come down front at Sherwood Shaw? Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity, Fred Wye McConnell, Post 51, to make a presentation here this evening. This presentation is-
If I could interrupt you one second. Folks on our television audience can't hear you this far away from the microphone. And if Tom's gonna help with that here, I think.
Tom, here's one. Hello, hello?
Yeah. Is that okay?
All right. Fred Wye McConnell, Post 51, American Legion Post, is honored to be here this evening to present some burial rosters for Oakwood Cemetery. There are 1,619 war casualties and veterans buried in Oakwood Cemetery. Excuse me as I read this, but there's some important facts in here I hate to overlook. These Oakwood Military Burial Rosters contain the names and documentation of 1,619 war casualties and veterans buried in Oakwood Cemetery. These rosters were essential to have in order for the 2022 and 2023 Rees Across America events, which are held in December. It's a national event. We've been fortunate for the last two years, the DAR, our local DAR chapter, Cabarrus Black Boys, with their able-bodied region here, Kathy Dean would head it up with assistance of the Post 51. With Kathy's help, we raised, had sponsored over 1,600, about 1,700 rees that were donated by the citizens of Cabarrus County in Concord. And these rees were sponsored at $17 apiece. So, it was quite an endeavor for two years to do this. You may ask, what is the connection between City Home Cemetery, Oakwood Cemetery, to the Cabarrus County? There's a lot. The, because Oakwood Cemetery is the history of Cabarrus County. The cemetery goes back to the early 1800s. Our 1876 courthouse, historical courthouse, was built by veterans. The county commissioner was a veteran, the sheriff was a veteran, the clerk of courts, the judges, everybody who ran our old courthouse were all veterans of the war between states. And the vast majority of these veterans are buried in Oakwood Cemetery. I want to point out one, the chairman of the Cabarrus County Commissioners, when this courthouse was built, was a veteran, and his name is Private James Napoleon Brown. Everybody around Concord called him Jimmy Brown, Colonel Jimmy. Jimmy first fought in the Mexican War of 1846, and then the next war, he volunteered, he was served with the Cabarrus Rifleman. Jimmy, our previous county commissioner was in Pickett's Charge. He was wounded in Pickett's Charge, wounded, taken his prison of war, came back to Concord, became the postmaster, and after being the postmaster, then he ran for county commission, became the county commissioner, chairman of the county commission board at the time the courthouse was open. The sheriff of Cabarrus County at that time was also a veteran. He was First Lieutenant Richard Sodler Harris. You got some big shoes to fill.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff Harris is also buried in Oakwood Cemetery. And we keep American flags on his grave, and all the veterans' graves and casualties' graves. But we particularly like to pay attention to the law enforcement people as former sheriffs by keeping blue flags, blue ribbons on their flags. Veterans have always played a major role in the development and growth of Cabarrus County. The textile industry, which once flourished here, was all initiated and started by former veterans. Veterans continue to play a major role in helping to make Cabarrus County the great county in which it is today. Post 51 thanks Cabarrus County for honoring its employees, veterans, each year on Veterans Day, and making a concerted effort to hire more veterans. We certainly do appreciate that. He's busy. Anyway, we really do appreciate that, all the extra effort that Cabarrus County puts into trying to help to hire veterans. These rosters contain much of the veteran history of Cabarrus County, and it is my honor, as the historian officer of Post 51, to present these Oakwood Cemetery historical rosters of Cabarrus County and of the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. These rosters we'd like to present to, for Cabarrus County, for the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, and to Denise McLean, who does an excellent job in the lower history room of our Cabarrus County Library. If you haven't been in that room and seen all the documentations and all the information that's available on the history of our county, go see Denise. She runs a wonderful place there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Tom, and thank you for all the work you do preserving the history of Cabarrus County. Certainly was my privilege to participate in the Rees Across America event, and all of you do a tremendous job with that. And hopefully, there'll be more people to participate this coming year. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next up is a proclamation for clerks to the Board of County Commissioners Week. And I will read that one. Our agenda's a little bit different tonight, so it's taking me a little more time to pull it up. Okay, proclamation, clerks to the boards of County Commissioners Week, May 5th through May 11th, 2024. Whereas, it is imperative to the democratic process that a well-informed citizenry participates in the operation of their local government. And whereas, the office of the clerk to the board provides the communication link between the citizens, the local governing body, and administrative departments, and local governmental partners. And whereas, the position of clerk is one of the oldest in local government, dating at least to biblical times, and whose term has long been associated with the written word, so it is that modern-day clerks are official record-keepers for their counties. And whereas, North Carolina law requires every board of commissioners to appoint a clerk, and the clerk continues in that position at the pleasure of the board. And whereas, the clerk's most significant statutory duties concern the preparation, filing, and safeguarding of local government records. But the statutory duties constitute only a portion of what the clerk actually does. And whereas, the clerk plays a vital role in county government and provides the written record needed to ensure that the board is accountable to the county's citizens and to other public and private officials. And whereas, the clerk is sometimes described as the hub of the wheel in local government because of the central work that the clerk plays in the government's communication network. And whereas, as local government becomes larger and more complicated, the clerk's role as a professional, dispassionate provider of information to citizens, government officials, and the media becomes more and more important. And whereas, clerks have the opportunity to participate in the North Carolina Association of County Clerks, a very active professional association of public officials dedicated to improving the professional competency of clerks through regular, regional, and statewide educational opportunities. And whereas, in cooperation with the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, School of Government, and Internal Institute of Municipal Courts, Clerks, the North Carolina Association of County Clerks helps to sponsor a nationally-recognized examination-based certification program that culminates in receipt of the designation of certified municipal clerk. And whereas, in addition, the North Carolina Association of County Clerks and the School of Government sponsor a state certification program leading to the designation of North Carolina Certified County Clerk, as well as opportunities for experienced clerks to obtain the continuing professional education needed to remain state-certified or to earn an advanced Master Clerk designation. And whereas, in addition to conducting education programs, the North Carolina Association of County Clerks also directly assist clerks on the job with mentoring programs to provide guidance to assist clerks in their day-to-day work. And whereas, clerks, upon their own initiative, participate in these certification and education programs, including annual meetings of the North Carolina Association of County Clerks and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, which not only improve the operation of their office, but through their achievements and awards bring favorable publicity to the counties in which they serve. And whereas, clerks are involved at the state level, as well as in potential legislative and other matters of interest. And whereas, although clerks work for the Board of County Commissioners, they truly provide public service. Now, therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th as clerks to the Board of County Commissioners Week, and extends our appreciation to our clerk to the board, Lauren Linker, and to all county clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the county they represent. Commissioners, I think you would all agree that we are blessed with an exceptional county clerk, and we appreciate all the work that she does for us. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the proclamation as read?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment. Lauren, thank you so much for all you do. You help keep us in line, keep our agendas together, and all the supporting documentation. And it makes our job a little easier, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to item four, from Cooperative Extension National Volunteer Week proclamation. We're happy to have Tracy Lacamp with us for that item.
Good evening, gentlemen. Lauren, again, echo all the things. Thank you for keeping us all in line, because you are the gateway. And so, that's a really valuable role to play within our organizations. Yes, good afternoon, good evening. I am here from North Carolina Cooperative Extension, and I have our lovely volunteers who are going to come up with me to help read. As you heard from Active Living in Parks earlier, volunteers are a valuable part of what we do. There are 12 staff members at our Cooperative Extension office here in Cabarrus County, and we are state employees that are contracted to work here in Cabarrus County. So, we're contracted employees to serve only Cabarrus County. And the only way that we can reach everybody in Cabarrus County is through hundreds of volunteers who give thousands of hours every year in that service of what we do with Cooperative Extension, serving through our 4-H Youth Development Program, our Extension and Community Association, and our Extension Master Gardeners, all work together to help connect people to agriculture, food nutrition, and youth development programs. We are so excited to have our whole group with us tonight. They're going to read through the proclamation, and we start with Mackay.
Whereas, Cabarrus County has a strong history of improving lives, strengthening communities, and making our state a better place through volunteerism. And?
Whereas, during National Volunteer Week, we celebrate the impact of volunteer service and come together to tackle community needs and foster a culture of civic engagement.
Whereas, Cooperative Extension volunteers have dedicated countless hours as master gardener volunteers, extension community, association volunteers, or 4-H volunteers to bring life-enhancing opportunities to the individuals of Cabarrus County, helping them to thrive in their local communities. And?
Becky? Whereas, National Volunteer Week was enacted in 1974 by President Richard Nixon to celebrate the spirit of volunteerism, urging all Americans to seek opportunities to provide service to their community. And?
Whereas, Cabarrus County residents are encouraged to learn about other local volunteer opportunities by reaching out to your county extension office or other county or local organizations. And?
Whereas, National Volunteer Week should serve as a catalyst for residents to serve our county today, to commit to volunteer by signing up now through Cooperative Extension, in a local school, government department, nonprofit, or other option in your community to promote volunteerism in our families and communities through an invitation to serve together and to be all in Cabarrus County when it is needed most.
Now, therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 21st through 27th, 2024, as National Volunteer Week in Cabarrus County, and commend its observance to all citizens.
And we would love for you to adopt this today, the 15th day of April, 2024.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tracy, as well as all your volunteers. Commissioner, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion to adopt it as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think Commissioner Workman has some comments. Maybe you could make those, if you want to, now or later during general comments. But I know you participated in one of their events.
I can, I can right now, while everybody's here. So, let's see. This April 6th, I got the honor to attend the Cabarrus County Extension and Community Association Achievement and Cultural Arts Celebration that was held at the arena. Cabarrus County was awarded an award, the 2023 ECA Community Supporter of the Year, presented to Cabarrus County from the Extension and Community Association. But the thing that I wanted to point out while Tracy and her team are here is the amount of volunteer hours was astonishing that you all put in. I have here that there were 34,305 volunteer hours for 2023, and that wasn't even all of them, because not everybody got their paperwork turned in. But out of those 34,305 hours, that equaled out to be $1,090,899 that it saved the county for these people graciously offering their time to volunteer. And the way it was broke down at the celebration was pretty much for every dollar that the county spends, we get a $33 return on investment impact because of the gracious giving of their time. So, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure everybody up here, I thank you- So on behalf of myself and I'm sure everybody up here, I thank you very much for everything that you do for us.
Okay, commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And thank you again to all of our volunteers in Cabarrus County. And we move now to item five, Proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Happy to call on Dr. Elise Pugh for that proclamation.
Good evening, commissioners. I would like to invite our new Behavioral Health Director to read the proclamation, if that's okay with you all.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pugh, and thank you to the board for your commitment to quality mental health care for our residents. So I'll now read the proclamation. Whereas, mental health is an essential part of overall well-being, impacting individuals, families, and communities across Cabarrus County. Whereas, one in five American adults experiences a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. Whereas, despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, presenting many from seeking help. Whereas, early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life. Whereas, May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Month in Cabarrus County. We encourage all residents of Cabarrus to educate themselves and others about mental health conditions, treatment options, and available resources. Challenge stigma by speaking respectfully and inclusively about mental health. Seek help if they are struggling with their mental health and encourage others to do the same. Support organizations that provide mental health services and advocacy. Create safe and supportive environments for open conversations about mental health. Together, we can create a community where everyone feels empowered to prioritize their mental health and well-being and seek help when needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up is item six from EMS, Cabarrus County Emergency Services Week, and we're happy to have Jimmy Lentz with us for that item. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you again with our annual proclamation for EMS Week. I'll be happy to read that. Whereas, emergency medical service is a vital public service. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. And whereas, emergency medical services teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, Americans benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And now therefore, it be resolved that you, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 24, 2024, as Cabarrus County Emergency Medical Services Week.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion to approve? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Well, we sincerely do appreciate what these folks do. You know, I've said it many times before, they're the last person that you ever want to pull up in your driveway, but when you call them, you're very happy when they do. And we certainly appreciate what you do. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to Human Resources Recognition of Bob Bushy, and Dr. Pugh will lead us in that recognition.
Good evening again. I have the absolute pleasure of saying a few words about Bob Bushy, who will be retiring at the end of this month. And so I will also invite his supervisors to say a few words after me. So Bob started with Cabarrus County in August of 2004 as a full-time driver. He had previous experience with several other transportation companies with responsibilities and driving and dispatch and operations, all things that have been part of his roles here with us in our public transportation unit. He was promoted to a transportation supervisor in 2005 and then promoted again to a transportation operations manager in 2007. From there, he began as an interim transportation director in 2013 and then was permanently assigned to that position in 2014. Under Bob's leadership, our team has received several awards and accolades. In fact, just last week, at the North Carolina Public Transportation Association Conference, Bob was awarded the Milestone Award for his, and I'm quoting, "tireless efforts to improve public transportation in North Carolina." Now I will turn the mic over to his transportation supervisors to say a few words about Bob as well.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tisha Christie. I met Bob 20 years ago when I started working for transportation. He has taught me so much throughout my life. He has, the leadership that he has is undeniable. He is so great at what he does. I have carried everything he has taught me throughout my entire life. And when I got the chance to come back to Concord after my husband retired from the Marine Corps, I came back to work for Bob, and I couldn't ask for a better person. He is such a mentor, and I absolutely love him. Thank you, Bob.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jamie Smith. I am a driver supervisor, and I've known Bob for about 20 years as well, too. We've bumped heads quite sometimes, but you know, he's a pretty good old guy. But Bob's always been there for us. He's always took us under his wings. He's like a brother to us, and we're definitely going to miss him. And I'm definitely going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Charles Ratliff. I came to work here 12 years ago. I'm sure Bob didn't think I'd be here doing this for his retirement. Joke's on you. So I just got to thank you, Bob. Over the years, I started as a driver. You promoted me to dispatcher scheduler, promoted me to driver supervisor to my current role, operations and training. I'm not sure if that's because you saw something in me, or if it's by default, nobody else applied. We don't have to discuss that. So this morning, every morning, we meet with Bob, and I ask him, I said, "Bob, what are you going to do May 1st?" He says he's going to dust off his golf clubs. So I took that. He's coming for Scotty's Green Jacket next year. We'll see how that goes. He's going to start local, though, right? As a theme song to one of your favorite shows, this is your column, Public Transportation. So I'll quote that theme song. "Your heart is true. You're a pal and a confidant. Thank you for being a friend."
Here's some service.
Oh, Bob, I thought you was going to get out of it, didn't you? Bob and I go back quite a few years. Most of our association has been through church. I've known Bob, his mother, his father, and his family. Good man. And on behalf of Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, Bob, I want to present you with this memento of your service to the county, and thank you for all that you've done for the citizens, particularly when it comes to transportation, those patients that need to go here and need to go there for whatever reason, and that you see to it that it gets taken care of. And I thank you, and I appreciate all you've done, and I wish you the absolute best in your retirement, and enjoy your game, the golf. I used to do a lot of that, but I don't do that no more. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want a couple of quick things. I won't keep you, but I only get to do this once. First, I want to thank my extraordinary, talented management team. I have no doubt when I'm gone that through their leadership, Transportation Department will continue to shine. I want to thank my other, my son and daughter-in-law, and my two sons, Cage and Bailey, that couldn't make it tonight, and I want to thank the rest of my family, or a few of the rest of my family sitting on the bench back here, the rest of Transportation. And I want you guys to always remember, you're not just picking people up and taking them from point A to point B, you're saving lives every day, and that's important. I want to thank county management for the support over the years, all the departments that have supported us. A special thanks to Todd and his team at IT for always making our emergency their emergency. And finally, I want to thank the commissioners. I don't think you get that enough. You've got a thankless job, no matter what you do, half the people are mad and half are happy. Several of you I've worked with for many years, some of you I'm just getting ready to, just getting to know, but I appreciate your commitment to help the county. I just encourage you to continue to have a healthy debate. When you believe in something, stand by it. If, and it's good to have that debate. If all of you agreed 100% on everything, we wouldn't need but one of you. So just keep up the good work, and I want you all to know that I appreciate you.
Thank you, Bob. We certainly appreciate everything that you've contributed to Cabarrus County over these years, and wish you well in your retirement. We move now to item eight, Fair Housing Month Proclamation, and we're happy to have Susie Morris to read that proclamation. Welcome.
Thank you. April is Fair Housing Month, and so we are requesting that the board consider this proclamation and then adopt it. Whereas, April is National Fair Housing Month, and April 11th, 2024 marks the 56th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas, Cabarrus County is committed to highlighting the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure everyone of their right to fair housing. And whereas, Cabarrus County commits to providing equal services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin. And now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners for Cabarrus County, North Carolina, do hereby resolve that April 2024, being Fair Housing Month, begins a year-long commemoration of the Fair Housing Act in Cabarrus County and urges all citizens to wholeheartedly recognize this celebration throughout the year.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, you have heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to item nine. We are happy to have with us the 2023 Trial Protection and Fatality Team Report. This is an outstanding group of volunteers that made this presentation at our work session two years ago, and we asked them to repeat it tonight. So I think Hannah Arrowood is going to lead off, and will be joined by some other folks. So welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris and others. You and I greet one another by saying hi, how are you? It crosses professions, faith, and generations. With the Maasai tribe in Africa, they greet one another by saying, "How are the children?" And the children, my friends, are not well. At this time, it's time for us to take responsibility and accountability for changing that narrative that is so sad. This generation is plagued with normalities that none of us in the room have ever had to face. Social media is all-consuming, mental health needs have never been greater, and sexuality is being encouraged and groomed younger and younger. So why does this matter? How does this impact us here today? Well, as the executive director of a local nonprofit that is committed to combating the sexual abuse, exploitation, and trafficking of specifically teen girls, I have spent the last 15 years, and my team has answered the call, that comes at 2:00 a.m. from law enforcement because they've identified a child victim of trafficking. We've advocated for the child whose behaviors are relentless but deserves to be defended because of the trauma that they've endured at the hands of their offenders. We respond to the needs of the Child Advocacy Center when the complex need of a child are vastly beyond their capacity. For 15 years, we have diligently fought for the freedom of every child who's experienced sexual exploitation and trafficking, and it's been a privilege. So I ask you again, commissioners and others listening, how are the children? Last year in 2023, we had an epic year of impact, but it came at great cost. We launched a curriculum in Cabarrus County schools for child abuse prevention that will help K-5 students gain understanding, and more importantly, vocabulary about inappropriate touch that is abuse. This has already led to positive disclosures of abuse through the Child Advocacy Center. And for that, we're excited at the progress that we move forward, and we're deeply committed to interrupting victimization through prevention education in partnership with schools. Commissioners, how are the children? Children account for one-third of all human trafficking victims worldwide, and two out of every three of those child victims are young girls. This is why Present Age exists, to serve closely with the Child Protection Team and the partners of this team here in Cabarrus County, because trafficking happens here. As much as we like to pretend it doesn't, as much as it's hard to look at, human trafficking, the selling of our children, happens here. Forty-nine girls participated in Present Age's Discovering Your Value. This is an eight-week curriculum that is a series we created to address the devaluation of our girls. Every girl enrolled in this program is considered high-risk based on a set of qualifications to be trafficked or has experienced some form of exploitation. Fourteen cases here in Cabarrus County were identified of young girls who were victims of trafficking. This could have been sex or labor. Present Age provides comprehensive, a comprehensive service model that provides supports to them and their family through holistic, individualized support services. We journey with girls and their families while addressing their medical, psychological, educational, relational, and spiritual needs. In 2023 alone, we received referrals from Atrium Healthcare, Cabarrus County Schools, Department of Juvenile Justice, Department of Youth and Family Services, and local law enforcement. So I'll ask you again, how are the children? Now more than ever, we must recognize that they are our greatest asset. There are many things that can pull for our time and our attention, but none are more important than our future. And without protecting our children, we simply have no future. It's a great pleasure to serve in this county along with people who understand that. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Paula Yost, the Chair of the Cabarrus County Child Protection Team. She dedicates herself to the protection of children in this county. As someone who works with counties across the region on a daily basis, I can assure you that to have her in this position is an undeniable asset. Thank you for this time this evening, commissioners.
Thank you.
We, one of the things that I hope that all of you were able to get from what Hannah just said is that human trafficking is real, and it is happening in our community, and that we are working consistently to try to deal with that. I want to just quickly begin because I'm going to assume that the public has no idea that they even have a Child Protection and Fatality Team and that they have no idea what we do. So our team is established by a North Carolina General Statute 7B 1407. And basically, what it does is the state legislature wanted to ensure that there was a team of highly qualified individuals who were reviewing every fatality of a child that occurs in this county. I have personally I have personally reviewed every autopsy of a child in this county for the last 10 and 1/2 years. In addition to discussing fatalities and fatality causes, we also talk about global issues of child protection, which include human trafficking that Hannah was just covering with you. Our team has a number of members, the majority of whom are what we call ex officio. That means you guys don't appoint them. They're here because the statute says we have to have them. Or they're here in some other manner, like we have to have an EMS worker. So we ask Jimmy, who would you like to do that? And he assigns a member of his staff. So I'm going to skip through like the team makeup tonight, because I want to spend my time giving you actual numbers and actual facts. I want to begin by explaining that the Department of Social Services, or the Child Welfare Services, has essentially three divisions. They have investigations. So investigations are the people who answer the phone when somebody has a concern about a child welfare issue. The number-one reporter of child welfare issues in Cabarrus County is Cabarrus County Public School teachers. We could not do what we do without our educators within the public school system. And during the pandemic, what was very terrifying when the children weren't in school is that the number-one reporter was law enforcement. And what we saw then was that the abuse was way worse than we had ever seen before. Because for a lot of people, they don't have good parents at home. I had a wonderful father and a wonderful set of grandparents and a great family who raised me in this community. And I want to dispel the myth that everyone has that. Just because you had a wonderful upbringing does not mean that children in this community don't. Every day, children in this community, I want to speak bluntly, they are raped, they are prostituted, they are beaten, they are exposed to drugs, they are exposed to domestic violence. That is the reality. And that is something that does happen in every community. But as our community is getting bigger, our problems are getting bigger. Because we're near a major interstate, we are a hub for human trafficking. We would have a much bigger problem than we already have if it wasn't for the Sheriff's Department and the sting operations that they run all the time. Investigations is the people who get the phone calls. So they received 4,970 calls this year. Of those calls, 1,694 were cases that they accepted. I want to explain why there's such a big difference in those numbers. Some of the time, people call, and they're not, they don't actually have an abuse or neglect problem. They're mad at their other parent. My child's father is blah, blah, blah. Well, that's not a child welfare concern that rises to the level of meeting a statutory reason to have your child adjudicated as incompetent. You need to hire a custody attorney, and you need to go to the courthouse in a civil district matter. That's not appropriate for child welfare. We also have people who call in who saw something weird, but they really don't know anything about the child. Like, I saw something unusual in Walmart, and I thought I needed to tell somebody. But they really don't know any facts, and they can't give the department very much to go off of. So we have a huge volume of those cases. 1,694 accepted cases, the really important number that I want you to see there is that 459 of them were investigative. What that means is that those cases involved some form of human trafficking, physical, sexual, or emotional abuse. Out of that number, we had 147 cases where there was a substance abuse allegation, and out of those 15, 15 cases had opioid use. We also wind up helping other counties. Our social workers are constantly being called to run errands in Stanley County, Anson County, Mecklenburg, and surrounding counties. Sometimes because our children have been placed somewhere else, sometimes because there's an available foster home in our county, and an out-of-county child is placed here. We also had 14 substance abuse-impacted infants, which means their parents were actively using during the pregnancy. 148 domestic violence cases, and 13 human trafficking cases. In-home services, I want to explain what in-home services is. There are a lot of children in the community whose parents do not meet the legal definition to adjudicate those children for foster care. These are children who are just simply living in poverty. Their parents love them, they care about them, they just simply don't have the resources to take care of them. You're going to hear a little bit more about that in just a few minutes from some of our Kannapla City School social workers who are behind me. They're going to talk to you a little bit more about what we see in poverty. But we've had 45 families per month in in-home services who are being assisted with our Cabarrus County social workers to try to give their children the things that they need, like food stamps, stable housing. Do you need daycare services so mom and dad can get back to work, or can get to work at all? Do you need help with the disability application? I've seen parents who have low IQs. If your IQ is 65, it's often very difficult for you to get and hold down a job. We also had 182 children who were actively in foster care, which is actually a pretty dramatic increase from the prior year, in which we had 158 children. I want to add again, nobody is just showing up at someone's house and taking their children. There are legal standards that you have to meet in order for your children to be adjudicated and taken into foster care. That is a legal proceeding. It goes through a court system, and it is observed by a judge. I also want to talk about our child fatalities. So this number says it's our 2022 fatalities, and I recognize that it is 2024. I want to explain why. So we look at our fatalities one year behind, because that is the way the Health Department for the State of North Carolina has designed it. So at the end of 2022, they began sending us the fatalities from that year, which we review in 2023. So right now, our team is actively reviewing 2023 fatalities, because it just runs a year behind. We don't love that. There are definitely moments where we will, if we hear about something concerning within the school system, we will have a fatality review earlier. But as a general rule, that's the way that it happens. Just so you can see our statistics for last year, or for '22, '22 was the highest year of fatalities that we've ever had in the community. It's 29 children. So 29 children doesn't seem like a very high number, and in reality, it's probably not for a population that is our size. But again, each of those children had worth and value in a family who loves them. So of those 29 children, 11 of them died from some form of illness that was just not preventable. These are your children that have a birth defect, where there's just nothing that could have done or could have happened that would have stopped that fatality. We also had eight children who died from extreme prematurity. So what happens in North Carolina if a woman carries a baby to 20 weeks, and then she has a miscarriage? It goes in that number. And so we have an excellent NICU at Atrium Cabarrus who does serve babies who are very, very small. I personally gave birth to one of them's eight years ago now, who weighed 1 pound and 14 ounces at birth, and he's now a thriving eight-year-old in the second grade. So you can have a massive success story with a premature infant, but it is very expensive, and it takes a lot of time. We had five accidental deaths. So an accidental death means exactly that. This was an accident. Nobody intended for this to occur. The number-one form of accidental death that I see in this community is parents who simply do not follow the directions when doctors tell you you need to engage in safe sleep. So safe sleep, for those of you who are unfamiliar, is the concept that you should not sleep with your child on your body, on a couch, or in the bed with you. Those children are at greater risk of suffocation. I've never once reviewed a fatality of a child who was in a crib, in a sleep sack, not surrounded by pillows or stuffed animals, who died. Every child who practices safe sleep, I don't see those fatalities. I see the ones where, and I'm compassionate to this, new parents are tired. I've had three of them, and I understand that. But I reiterate that following those safe sleep practices is very important. We have had two children who died as a result of an accident, but it was substance-impacted. Basically, we had a father who tested positive for meth, and a mother who tested positive for meth and marijuana. Their child was in an unsafe sleep environment, but because they were impaired, they were not actually able to care for that child. We also had a child who was exposed to their parents' fentanyl and died. We've had one case of abuse. We've had one case of suicide, which was the intentional self-harm by handgun discharge. I want to also add, that number is technically, I have to mention this, we actually have had a second school-aged child who died from a suicide with an unsecured firearm, but that child was like two days past their 18th birthday. So technically, they do not count in our statistics. Remember how I said I've been reviewing fatalities in this county for 10 years? We haven't had suicides. We've had a lot of stuff, but we truly have not had suicides. So I want to encourage all of my responsible gun owners to be responsible gun owners. If you have a child who is in your home, use a gun lock. The pediatricians will give you a gun lock, the sheriffs will give you a gun lock. The suicides that I see in this community are usually a child who was able to get their hands on mom and dad's gun and make an irrevocable decision. We've also had a 16-year-old who overdosed. It is unclear if that was, if it was an accident or if it was suicide-related, but it has been ruled as an unintentional overdose. All right. I'm going to hand off the microphone for just a few minutes to my friends from Kannapla City Schools. I want to add that we were unable to have Cabarrus County Schools represented tonight, because this meeting actually conflicts with their board meeting. But I want to introduce Mackenzie Wofford, who is a school social worker and the McKinney-Vento Liaison for Kannapla City Schools, and Joanne Gary, who is Kannapla City Schools' interim Director of Student Services. And I'll be back when they're finished.
Good afternoon. I want to share with you what the McKinney-Vento Federal Act means for us in the school systems as it relates to youth experiencing homelessness. So the McKinney-Vento Act requires that schools identify students who lack fixed, regular, or adequate housing. In other words, this is, these are students who are in temporary living arrangements, or as most would say, are homeless. I think it's important to share the following information to as many people that will listen, because what most people picture in their head when they think of homelessness is very different than the reality for our children in Cabarrus County. What comes to mind for most when they hear the word homeless is that they think of someone sleeping on a park bench or sitting on the sidewalk with a cart filled with items. We think of people with no home, no money, no job, and helpless. The problem with that thinking is that it isn't the only picture of homelessness, and it isn't the most accurate either. What's left out are the images of children sleeping in their vehicles with all of the family's belongings because they don't have a home. Images of a single parent with their three children sharing a hotel room, which may have a microwave, maybe even a kitchenette if they're lucky, but no pots, pans, or food to cook with. Images of a family that is what we call doubled up, meaning that a family of possibly three to seven could be living in one bedroom of another family's home because they have no other option. What I want you to know is that most of the families I work with are hardworking. Many just find themselves in a single or series of unfortunate circumstances that led to their lack of housing. What I've seen the most of in the past two years is that a family who has had consistent and stable housing is now being forced to leave their home, their rental home, because the landlord wants to sell the house. So where do they go, and what options do they have? With limited time to find an affordable option, often they go to a hotel. Then they get stuck, $500 a week. Now tell me, who can afford to pay $500 per week, buy groceries or takeout if they don't have the full kitchen, pay for everything that they need for a living, and still have the money to save up for first and last month's rent, security deposit, and application fees to find something new and stable? I say all of this so it's better understood as I share the numbers of what we see in Cabarrus County as far as our children who are impacted by homelessness. The number of McKinney-Vento-identified students in Kannapla City Schools and Cabarrus County Schools for 2023 has reached a peak of over 900 students. To put that in perspective, if you look at Mount Pleasant High School, that's more than the number of students in that high school, who have 860 students. It's also more than half of the student body at Ale Brown High School, which, in my opinion, looks like a small college campus. In Kannapla City Schools, we have a total of 140 students identified as McKinney-Vento. 82 of those students are doubled up, 39 are in a hotel or motel, 10 are in a shelter or transitional housing program, and nine of those students are unsheltered, meaning that they're in a makeshift living arrangement. This could be a shed, this could be a tent, or their vehicle. For Cabarrus County Schools, they have a total of 782 students. 500, 523 of those students are doubled up. 205 of those students are in a hotel. 37 in a shelter or transitional housing program. And 17 of those students are unsheltered. When we talk about the impacts of homelessness on our children, much of it's obvious. Food insecurity, lack of stability, more people than beds to sleep on, if they have beds at all. Money for the essentials like buying clothes, washing clothes, and so on. In regard to school, we do our best to provide a bridge for students identified as McKinney-Vento. So as required by law, students are able to have a quick and speedy enrollment as we work with what they have as far as residency documentation. We aim for school stability, so rather than changing schools each time they change where they're living, we try to, we try our best to have them stay at their school of origin. We provide transportation in those cases so that students can stay at the same school, and we provide things like uniforms, food bags, and we try to link families to as many community resources as are needed. But despite these efforts, when we look at our McKinney-Vento-identified students at school, we see that students who are experiencing homelessness are 87% more likely to drop out before graduation. So I want to leave you with these numbers to stress the urgency of the affordable housing crisis. The reported eviction rates of Cabarrus County. There are 100 evictions per month, 23 per week, and four evictions per day. So this could mean that each day, a child in our schools go home to an eviction notice. So I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. My name's Joanne Gary. I'm just going to take a quick minute to give you guys some updated data on some increases we're seeing with substance use, particularly with vapes. So currently, right now, Cabarrus County Schools, I'll share some of their numbers, in January had a total of 289 vapes with some sort of marijuana identified within that. They had 95 incidents of vaping with tobacco within that, and 27 incidents of some other form of substance use with alcohol or controlled substances. In Kannapla City Schools, we have had, this number is reflected from February 14th, we at that point had 83 total vaping incidents. Since then, as of the end of the school day today, we have increased to 125 incidences that require disciplinary action resulting of a vape possession or use. So we are seeing exponential increases in our school systems. When we look at how we try to identify and support and prevent within some of this through education, intervention efforts, sometimes we have to get down to, what are the controlled substances in this, and what are these types of vapes? And we simply don't have consistent means to identify. Sometimes we have to go by the type of vape, sometimes it's the number reflected on that model, and sometimes the students divulge to us what is within that vape, right? THC, tobacco, et cetera. So our job as a school system is prevention and intervention. And our goal is to try to not only educate our kids, but when we do have incidences of substance use, particularly vapes, put in place concerted intervention efforts. And for us to best understand what is within those vapes, we can then align with what types of interventions and supports they need as a family and as a child. One of the first steps we're taking as Kannapla City Schools is this coming school year, we're going to be installing vape detectors in all of our middle school bathrooms. So we are going to see an increase in possession and use of that as a result of that. But it's critical, and it's also critical to have resources to align intervention and supports as early as our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
All right. So every year, our team usually comes to the commissioner, and we make some sort of an ask. And some of the time, it's just public awareness, some of the time, it's not financial, some of the time, it's not even something that you all have the purview or the jurisdiction to do, but you are able to speak to our House and Senate delegation all the time, and frequently, that's a conversation that you have. So we would ask for that type of assistance with legislative advocacy. One of the things, our district attorney was unable to be here tonight, but something that she has said she would like to have is a lab that will test the vapes. So an unknown fact is that you can walk into a vape, or you can walk into a vape shop and just purchase a vape. We don't actually know what's in them. We don't know if it has THC in it. We don't know whether it has tobacco in it. We don't know whether it's vitamin vapor. We have no idea what's in them, and we have no way to test them, because we do not have a lab that does that. This is one of the top things that law enforcement has told Ashley that they need. It's also something that we are hearing on the regular from our Cabarrus County principals, that we've got to get the substance abuse, especially the literal substance abuse that's going on within our schools, under control. So we need a lab to test for that. We are not asking you to pay for that lab, but we are saying we need to figure out how to make it happen or how to make it happen or how to legislatively make it occur. I know that Ashley has been researching what other counties do to try to get us some more information on what our options are there. You guys did an amazing job last year of advocating for us to get a medical examiner's office for the public who doesn't know this story. We lost our medical examiner's office for a period of time because it was always in Mecklenburg. Mecklenburg has so many murders right now that, and so much death, period. They didn't have enough space in their medical examiner's office to serve us or Union County anymore, so they cut us off. So whenever we had to have a murder investigation, the dead bodies were going all the way to Chapel Hill, I believe. And it was dramatically increasing the amount of time it was taking us to do what we needed to do to keep the public safe from literal murderers. So you guys were able to work with our legislative delegation to get us a medical examiner's office in Wingate, which is back to serving our population, which we need. That location would be an excellent place to put this type of a lab so that we can actually figure out what's going on, because we don't know what we need to treat a substance -using child for. We have no idea if it is opioids or fentanyl or whatever. We have no idea because we don't know what's in the vapes. They are totally unregulated. Regulating them, period, would also probably be very helpful. On that note, you've heard our homelessness numbers. Never before in Cabarrus County have we had roughly 1,000 homeless children. I've seen some homelessness numbers. We, I've seen 430 before. I've seen 600. This is an explosive amount of homeless children, and it is because it is so expensive to live here right now. We should not have 1,000 homeless children. Children do not sign up to live in poverty. They did not ask for this. I have no idea what the answer to that is, by the way. I wish that I did. If I had the answer to it, I would wave magical fairy dust and I would make it happen tomorrow. I don't know what the answer is. I've studied other large communities, including San Francisco, Salt Lake City, New York City. Essentially, what I can tell you is that big cities have big city problems. We are becoming a big city. We're the, I believe it's the 10th fastest-growing county in the United States. And so this increase in homelessness makes sense for a city of our population size. But what it also means is that we need resources to assist with this, because these kids did not sign up for this. They were born into this. So our school social workers, remember how I said the number-one reporter for child abuse and neglect cases are our Cabarrus and Kannapolis City School social workers and teachers? There was a time when this community didn't have school social workers at all, and they have been absolutely instrumental in helping families like this and making sure that children have basic things that they need: soap, tampons, hair care items, whatever they need in order to actually get a bath. They're there to call the Salvation Army to say, "Do you have a room? Can we get someone here?" They're on the phone all the time with CCM. These families don't know how to do that because they're drowning. So that's the critical role that our social workers, both DSS and the school system, are playing. Additionally, we need to have some sort of evidence-based treatment for substance use involving juveniles. So right now, if you are under the age of 18 and you are addicted, and I do see this, we have reviewed cases of this all the time, if you're under 18 and an addict, there is nowhere in the state of North Carolina for you to go to rehab. That does not exist here. So essentially, you have to go to South Carolina in order to experience some sort of juvenile rehab. One of the things that we are trying, or that they are trying to do in Cabarrus County Schools, it's not a rehab, but they are trying to create some programming there so that if they're identifying these children who are using dangerous substances while they are in school, which is a bad sign if you can't get through your school day without using a substance, and we don't want to expel them, because guess what happens? If you're in school smoking pot, or whatever it is that you're doing, and we send you home, what do you think you're going to do all day? You're going to stay in your house and smoke and use all day long. So we want to keep them in school and keep them on some form of educational track. So that also comes into asking for some support for a recovery high school. And again, that's not necessarily something we are asking you to pay for, but it is something that the state needs to create. We don't have any form of political agenda here. Children are not partisan. This isn't about what political party you affiliate with or don't. These are our children. They can't vote yet. They don't have a voice. So we have to be that voice for them. I think that was everything I had.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Paula or her team?
I, I had one after the presentation, and you might, you might not have it. I know it's, it's our DA's. But out of the 459 investigative cases, and it was either 13 or 14 sex trafficking, are we prosecuting all of those? I guess that...
We're doing the very best that we can. We are doing the very best that we can. Hannah, would you like to answer that question? Since Ashley's not here to answer it?
So prosecution of human trafficking cases, as you could imagine, is pretty complicated, especially depending on whether or not you have a victim that is willing or a part of that process. And what we do know is oftentimes, the information, unless they were recovered during a sting operation, which does happen here in this county, but if that isn't the way in which we come to understand who the perpetrator is and what the evidence around the case is, we may not know specifics. They may have thought their name was this, but it's actually that. They may have said, "Oh, he was driving this kind of vehicle," or this kind of thing. So it can be very complicated, but I will tell you that, again, I work with multiple counties, and Cabarrus County is fierce in ensuring that there is advocacy and prosecution of this when the evidence is there to support it.
Every county doesn't have Ashley Shanley as their district attorney, and we're fortunate and blessed that we have her.
Other questions or comments?
Uh, we're on, Paula, when we talked about this at the work session, I had a couple of concerns about, number one, how much does the lab cost? Did we find anything out about that?
I believe that is in the research that we've been working on for you, and so at the, at this moment, I don't have an exact number. But in my previous conversations with the medical examiner's office, I believe it's really just a matter of getting the chemicals. Like, I don't think it's that horrendously expensive, but I don't want to misspeak or spout out some number that I don't really know. But I think in this particular circumstance, it's probably cheaper than what we would think that it is.
Well, I don't want us to drop this, as I mentioned in the work session, because it's very important, our children are very important. And then, Rich, I had a question for you, if you remember, about the opioid funds. Were, did you determine whether or not the opioid funds could help us in the purchase of a lab, if we, if we could do that?
From my initial research on that, it doesn't appear that we can.
Okay. Okay. And that's all I had, Paula. And I appreciate all that you do and the efforts that you put. And folks, this is not a paid position, by the way. This woman does this on her own because she loves children. And she's the strongest advocate that I know or I've ever met for children. You got a problem with children, you got a problem with the issues that she talked about tonight. She's the go-to person. And I know that it's not easy to take a family's child away. That's not something that's easily done. It has to have the substantiating evidence, it has to have proof, and all of that to move forward. It's not just something we reach up one day and decide to do something. We don't do that. But I appreciate all you do, the research you do, and the time you spend into this for the children of Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I certainly echo Commissioner Shu's comments and certainly appreciate you and your entire team, not only for the time that you've given us tonight, but the time that you give to the children of Cabarrus County throughout the year. It is an invaluable resource, and, and we don't get an opportunity to say thank you often enough. But, but thank you, and thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we move now to informal public comment, and if somebody would pass the yellow cards down to me. Thank you. I think that each person will have three minutes to speak. If you would, come to the microphone and state your name and address. I think the clerk has grouped these by categories where people had their subject matter. Someone mentioned to me that there might be a group that had some particular order that they wanted to speak in, so if I get that wrong, you just make me aware when we get to it, and we'll, we'll adjust it. So our first card is from Jeter Anderson.
How are the children? Jeter Anderson, Kannapolis. Don't answer that question. I'll answer them for you. The children ain't good. Ours was just taken. Like, the lady said, "Don't happen." Nah, it happens. You get a burnt-out or dizzy social worker, they'll just take your kid. And don't worry about trying to ever get them back. You'll never see them again. You'll never see them again because we got a conflict of interest, J. H. White, H.J. White up here, and they know it. They know about them. And what happened is, we went to the DSS because my mentally ill sister needed some resources, transportation, medicine, stuff like that. We met with Jessica Bridges and said, discussed everything. Hey, I'm, you know, I'll help her, I'll help take care of your sister, you know? Hey, that's great. I noticed something happened along the lines. I noticed my sister on a sex trafficking site, some pictures. And I said, "Jessica," I said, "Can you help me?" I said, "Can you find out what this is about? I'm worried about her. She's vulnerable. She's vulnerable." Abandons care, abandons the care, and the social worker just comes, takes the prettiest little girl you ever want to see. And no, I don't expect y'all to care, or even look at me, or even ask questions, because I see how y'all treat one of your board members up here. Pump the brakes. "What? What are you talking? You ain't been here, you ain't been here long enough." Nah, you absolutely need to pump the brakes. And, and try pumping it on this DSS. We, the only thing we've done is built two DSSs. So we need more social workers, and right now, we're getting more, more crying out for help. If your kids get took while you're, if your kids get took while you're, you know, while you're poor or something, forget them. Forget your kids. You're not going to get them with J. White. You're not going to get a lawyer in this county. They're scared of them. He's on the board, I mean, he's on the bar. He's, he's over a lot of things. He wears a lot of hats. And 280,000 a year, and you got complaints like this? You got people complaining like this, man? 280,000? You're paid like a king. You're paid like a king to have these complaints up here, these complaints on you, that you're shutting the doors and not dealing with. If these doors been open, why was this evidence hidden? And this is evidence that my sister's mentally ill, and it's also evidence that she was exploited, neglected, and abused. And Jessica Bridges is still here to this day, so we're scared...
We're not supposed to be naming names, are we, not chair...
Yes, we are. Don't interrupt me, man. You don't need to interrupt me like you did Tim Furr. You need to treat people with respect, and sit up there and listen. And sit up there and listen. So listen to me. Jessica Bridges, the Jessica Bridges neglected care of my sister, and she's here today. And I'm scared for this DSS. This DSS is scary. Nobody needs to, won't help or need help from this DSS. You'll get hurt. Your family will get hurt. Your children will get hurt. This county is terrible, horrendous, and this guy, 280,000, needs the help.
Chairman Morris, according to our policy, we are not supposed to be naming names. And, and we've had this discussion multiple times, and so I'm going to ask you to do something about it as the chairman of the board.
You are correct. We, our policy states that names for employee, county employees are not to be named. You have repeatedly disregarded those rules. We've discussed them many times. If, if it happens again, we will ask the deputy to remove you from the chambers, and you will be banned from public comments for 90 days. If you follow the rules, then, then you will be fine, but you have to follow the rules. Is that appropriate, Commissioners?
It's a, it's a public grievance. It was a public grievance on Jessica Bridges. So I don't have time to...
Okay, our next card is from Amy Palacios.
Hello, I'm Amy Palacios. There's a lot of things that we talked about tonight. Medical health, medical care. I was actually, for 18 years, I served in ER and ICU, and now in the last seven years, I've been a medical provider over elderly homes. I've never done drugs, never. I waited to have sex till I got married. I've never even smoked a cigarette. But these things that were addressed, like homelessness, and things that were addressed that should be talked about with children, were act, are actually the things that we're, we're having issues with are not being addressed. There's people that are here that have gone to DSS for mental health complaints, for sexual assault complaints, and for, in my situation, domestic violence complaints. And instead of getting help with DSS, we were, we were attacked. We were, children were taken. In my instance, my children were not taken from me, but I have been extorted a, a large amount of money for getting help, trying to get help from DSS. I actually had a consent order with my ex-husband that my children, I could have a, their, their parent, the parents of this, this man could, they could see the children. He could see the children under them. But because of that situation, I was told, when I got a lawyer, I, this is what, one of, I'm one of the cases that we couldn't get a lawyer facing an opposing certain lawyer in this county. Nobody will take your case if you're opposing that lawyer. I had to get in a lawyer from another county, and that lawyer was told that even though we had a consent order, that the grandparents had rights back and forth, like a consent order with me. They said that that wasn't upheld unless you terminated a parental rights of that person, of my ex-husband. And so then we went through a whole process because we were told that by an attorney of this county. And then, after, I never actually asked for its parental rights to be terminated, I just wanted a court order with the grandparents that were safe. Then I was essentially made to, to pay $70,000 to my abuser and, and $30,000 to his lawyer. Currently, I, I have been extorted with child support money for my older kids when we had no child support order, $2,800 a month, and then having to pay $70,000 to my, the abuser that went to jail for six months for beating me up.
Okay, our next card is from Amy Betts.
Hello, my name is Amy Betts, and I'm the founder of Adelys, a nonprofit in Cabarrus County that supports the rights of biological families. I have done this in my capacity for over 17 years, Mr. Shu, and I don't get paid to do it. I talk to families all day, every day, so I have a lot of experience and a lot of stories I can tell. I want to talk a little bit about the mental health crisis plaguing this state and this county, the fraud, waste, and abuse for the funds that are being inappropriate, inappropriately, I guess, placed. I think the lady who was speaking, that kept saying she didn't know, I think her name was Ms. Yost, that's right. From what I can understand, she doesn't know a lot of things about a lot. And I think you too, Mr. Shu, probably could be informed on some things too, about the funding and where it needs to be, because their ideas for things aren't where your money needs to be. There is an epidemic happening here, and the state-funded family court system is part of it. Cabarrus County, the state, and it goes all across the counties here in North Carolina. And the family courts, they're not helping families, they're actually harming them. Part of that, we have judges, their clerks, attorneys, their paralegals, social workers, guardian ad litem's, members of the police, public schools, the child welfare system, which include federal, state, and county-funded agencies. There is violation of an anti-organized crime law known as RICO, and it's within the criminal enterprise, known as the family court industry, that the county and state... county and state must address. The resources that are being created for these guardian ad litem, parenting classes, supervision, reunification, psychiatric evaluations, they're all part of this family court funding racket. The abuses of power, they're going to continue unless someone in power takes a stand. There is a trafficking problem, and it's coming through the family court system. And all those people that I just told you, they're part of it. How do I know? Because I've been doing this for 17 years. And I work, and I talk with families and parents every day. There are solutions. And I've gone to the county manager, and I've made some suggestions for some of those. But it's going to have to start at the top, at the federal level, state, and there's some stuff this county can do as well. We need to hold people accountable, and that's not happening. They are violating rights of the people of this county and this state. We need to cut the funding, and that would be from social services and some of these people. We need assistance. And I would say surveys in these courts, that, that would probably help, from the people. And I can send this list of things, and I could email you all if you'd like to review them. My website is adelise.org, and I share resources on there as well. Thank you.
Okay, our next card is from James Campbell.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, again. First, let me give honor to my Savior, Jesus Christ. So here we are at another county commissioner meeting, and there has been no improvement regarding Cabarrus County DHS improper removal of children. Cabarrus County, it signed a severance with attorney H J White. Did you know, as I'm speaking to you right now, he's violating federal law in my case of my children being improperly removed on August the 7th, 2023? Mr. Meeser, are we going to continue to beat around the bush about renewal of J, H J White's contract? We say no to J White. We say no to Chrissy Wellham. We say no to corrupt DSS workers like Jessica Killian. We say yes to DSS get in-house counsel.
Chairman Morris, you can't hold one person to, to not name.
It is my right. I can say what I can say.
We have a policy says you cannot name the names.
Let me get a copy of that policy. Show me a copy, because I requested a copy today. Show me the copy, because that is public knowledge. I should be able to have a copy of that. That is public knowledge. If you guys want to see a copy of that policies, you can get it. You know how I know? Because I am a city, a county worker, a city worker for a bigger county, Mecca Borough County. So do not interrupt me, because if you're not going to do anything about this, this corrupt system that's here in Cabarrus County, don't open your mouth.
Mr. Campbell, we can easily give you that policy?
Yes, I asked for it today.
You can continue your comments, but you cannot call out names of county employees.
Well, let me tell you something. Until I see it on a policy that I am privy to, I'm going to continue to call out names.
Okay, then I'm going to ask you to please leave the chambers until you can read that policy.
So you want me to leave? My constitutional right to speak. You want me to leave?
Yes, sir.
So what I would do, I'm going to continue to have my people march, continue to march, continue to protest.
Got you, man. I'm out. That's wrong. Public, we're allowed to publicly, why y'all public officials?
Because what's happening is, as you see this Yost left, before the truth came out.
Okay, our next card is from Jerry Anderson.
Jerry Anderson, I went to your, man, this is, this is rough on me. I went to get some resources from your human resources for my mental child, moderate type 2 bipolar disorder, poster bag disorder, borderline personality disorder, and just been diagnosed with schizophrenia. Your supervisor down there told me she would help me. She even got her shot. Started investigation. I asked for resources. Started investigation, five-month investigation. I know nothing about it. I'd probably, I didn't know she was with child protection. Her, her thing said Jessica Bridges, sorry, supervisor. I apologize. Anyway, listen, I took her a picture of my daughter on Backpage. You remember Backpage? It's, it was famous for trafficking children. And I said, I don't know where this picture come from, but I let a government official know. Evidently, she used it as an accusation, as my child being a whore or something, and looking bad on the child. And it wasn't nothing that, that at all. But regardless, y'all took my child, and she should be here. Y'all got to keep your hands off the children. Let the parents raise them. Leave our children alone, especially the Christian parents. Y'all sit up here and hear me, and y'all think y'all do nothing about it. Am I the only one that got screwed here for getting help? Mr. Schu, you called my family those people, and you apologized, and I shook your hand up here. And then you come to me and said, you, you got some trouble, you, your grandson was in, you know about it. And you, you, you was nice. And I say, Mr. Schu, what can I do about it? Keep coming up here, I guess. And then you got tired of hearing this story because it hurts. And you said, let's gag him. And you wouldn't shake my hand no more. Are you two-faced? Yes. Regardless, my child taken wrongly, been taken wrongly. She was mental. Y'all didn't report her to, to, to no trafficking, anything around here. And y'all are wrong, man, because that child died. Y'all took her not from a, a, a bad mama. Y'all took her from a sick person that we tried to get help for. My daughter was good enough to say, I'll take the help. And what y'all did, James Campbell, was wrong.
Okay, our next card is from Jasmine Luter.
Hi. Good evening, commissioners. I want to start my remarks by acknowledging and thanking you all for the work that you guys did with us last year on crisis financial assistance. Last year, when I stood before you all, I told you that Cabarrus County, my home of 18 years, was ranked number six out of the 100 North Carolina counties by the NC Housing Coalition for rate of evictions. Well, I believe you heard a, a little bit about it earlier, but I have bad news. And we're currently ranked number five in the state now. The eviction crisis continues to become more severe because we are in a housing crisis. People here cannot afford to stay in their homes because there is not any affordable homes. We are in a crisis, and our community is hurting. The situation truly is dire, and you can tell by the statistics that the Kannapolis City School representative shared earlier. We at Down Home do believe that we have a solution that fits into your budget, and we hope you are willing to work with us once again to build a better and healthier Cabarrus County, because I believe you want to see that just as much as we do. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Our next card is from Rick Hoffert.
Good evening, commissioners. I appreciate the work that you started with us last year in addressing the, the problem with eviction in our county. And as Jasmine just spoke, there's still a lot of work to be done. I would like to present, in a sense, in our thoughts, a bridge from what we identified as a crisis last year that's continuing, but then get to, begin to keep working on that, but then get to the point of addressing some core issues. And one is that it's so expensive to, to live in our county. People are being priced out of apartments, out of homes. Yeah, it's pretty amazing to hear how many kids are homeless in Cabarrus County, just the kids. And so we want the, the county to, to work with us and to consider some things that could be done to start addressing this problem of lack of affordable housing and ways to get more of that built in our county so that we can have fewer kids homeless. Thank you.
Okay, our next card is from Jane Williams.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you again for helping us with our last project. Yes, my name is Jane Williams, and, yeah, we do have a crisis here in Cabarrus County of affordable housing. I volunteer three to five days a week, and I am out there with the people, and I am listening to the people, and I'm standing in front of you now to speak for the people. We need help. Just, I want to take you back for a minute. Remember being a little child running in from school? First thing you smell is your mom's home cooking. You run to the kitchen. She's got cookies and milk for you. And then dad comes home, and you sit down and you have dinner. That's family time, dinnertime. You talk about the things you did during the day. And then you get to play a game. If not game night, you watch a movie. And if you're good enough, you get to stay up just a little bit late. Now it's bedtime. Mom comes in, kisses you goodnight, tucks you in. We don't have that anymore, because our parents are working three jobs between the two of them. Children have been left to their home by themselves, going home. No food, no cookies and milk, no bedtime stories or kisses. We need help. And I'm here to say, I'm going to do whatever it can to help. And I'm hoping we, the people, are depending on you, our leaders, to help us. We are drowning. Some of us can't swim, and some of us are just tired now of doing it. Throw us a life jacket. Help us. That's what you're here for. We're depending on you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I hope you all have a great evening. Oh, have a wonderful dinner also. Thank you, guys.
Next is May Mack.
Hello, commissioners, and to everyone here listening in Cabarrus County. Today, I'm here to advocate for nonprofit, community-operated housing. Right now, in 2024, there is a corporate takeover of housing in the United States. In North Carolina, nearly 80% of new residential development over the last five years has been luxury apartments, built by these corporate giants. Don't forget that these corporations do not make good neighbors. They increase rents year over year. They charge us outlandish and random fees because they are explicitly designed to extract profit. On average, these properties are flipped for just a couple mil every two to five years. An alternative to this model that is available is nonprofit, community-operated housing. This removes the profit margin and can be facilitated by organizations with aligned missions of providing access to safe and stable housing. The main barrier to its development is upfront capital. By funding a revolving, low-interest loan account that's available to nonprofit, mission-aligned organizations, localities have shown it to be a supported mechanism that promotes sustainable and accessible housing. It is revolving because payments on the loan go back into the account and is available for the next project. Also, by having these properties be deeded as permanently affordable housing by covenant, community land trust, the subsidy is retained within the property in perpetuity. Public safety is said to be a public, to be a core value of this board, but I want to remind you that according to developmental theory, a core part of achieving the basic need of safety is having shelter. The citizens of Cabarrus County deserve to have the safety of shelter. And I beg you, commissioners, to please act for the community on this. Nonprofit, community-operated housing is a third way of doing housing that requires community dollars to take shape. It is not public housing. Please support the development of nonprofit housing here in Cabarrus County by funding a revolving, low-interest loan account. This public finance solution lowers the cost of debt and makes building affordable housing more affordable. And recoverable funding streams that can capitalize future projects really can be a game changer. Please put public dollars towards the number one issue that has been identified in the 2021, 2, whatever it was, needs assessment in Cabarrus County, affordable housing. Thank you.
Okay, next is Neil Tally.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I've heard a lot of interesting stuff tonight that I may speak about that I hadn't planned on. Some of it are the lady with the kids that was talking about getting the chemicals or whatever they needed, the test, the vape stuff. I think that's a good idea. You know, I think a, a lot of stuff like this could be done if the county would just use smart spending instead of wasting money on stupid projects. Now, about the housing and stuff, the tax rate is like going outrageous now. Property taxes are going up. All our taxes are going up. People are being taxed out of their homes, and I think it's a travesty. But last month, I was here, and I was talking about the property reevaluation. And so, Mr. Morris, you know, you told me about a letter y'all got, and you said, and it was on YouTube. I checked it a couple times because I want to make sure I had it right. You said you got a letter, like in 2001, said you had to do it in three years, which put it to this year. Well, then, one of my good friends from your Facebook page sent me a text that you had sent then, and it was actually 2022. It said here that your 2022 sales assessment ratio median and all that had to be done by January 1st and the third following year, which would have been 2025. And also, in the Concord Tribune, the last meeting was on the 18th, and I think this was in the 19th on the Tribune, where it said, an interview with the Independent Tribune after a board commission meeting, Chairman Steve Morris said in hindsight, the board could have delayed reevaluation for another year, though it would have required making an exemption of the every four years policy. With every four years policy is just a policy every four years. You have to do it every eight years. So I just wonder why you told me something that wasn't true last. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Kenneth Heim.
Name is Ken Heim. I've lived in Cabarrus County for 20 years in the same home. And I'm, I'm here to discuss legal coding and equity issues with the 2024 property tax revaluation. My purpose is to make the board aware of these issues so they can be addressed or resolved. Even though I will be using my house as an example, I have no way asking you to revalue my house. Some of the statements will be questions, but they are not to be addressed as I'm going through it. If you want to ask a question afterwards, that's great. All right. So we're going to start out, the 2024 revaluation manual introduction states four key points. The primary purpose of real estate assessment is to arrive at the true value parentheses market value. The accomplished, the county's goal, to accomplish the county's goal of determining just and equitable values, as in fair. The mass appraising the county's goal of determining just and equitable values, as in fair. The math appraising the realities of the local market along with state and local laws must be considered. And I have an issue with that word, considered, when you have state and local laws in that same sentence. That, I hope, is a misprint. Because, so how would, I would say, how does, can you have the county decide laws, what they want and what they won't follow, and does that not conflict with just and equity? Well, it does. And then the fourth point is, you also, on page three, it has the North Carolina Machinery Act listed on page three. And there's people here who understand how this affects them. For the purpose of this section, the acquisition of an interest in land by the equity having the power of enament domain with respect to the interest acquired shall not be considered competent evidence of the true value and money of comparable land. Okay? So now I'm gonna just give you a little example of my house because the problems were off the charts, not a little bit. So first, I got the first evaluation, and my property tax went up $383,000, $383,500 on a house that was appraised originally at $383,500, basically. And they raised it to $741,750. So I had a 90, well, I read that one wrong, but I had an evaluation of 93.41% in four years. Now, all the websites that I could find on real estate, a four-bedroom home went up an average of about 24% to 28% in this county based on my zip code. It didn't go up 94%. Now, we filed an online informal revaluation, met personally with three different tax assessors here and at the downtown office. We invited them to even come and do a walkhouse or walkthrough at our house, which two of them did. Problems with the informal revaluation. Our house is a four-bedroom, sold as a four-bedroom, and is being taxed as a six-bedroom. And how did this happen? A fifth bedroom, fifth bedroom was added for taxes in '04, the year we bought the house. And the sixth bedroom was added after this 2021 revaluation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Heim, but your time has run out in respect of being, treating everybody equally. Hopefully, you'll take this up with the assessor's office.
We can't get them to return our calls or answer my emails and questions that I have.
I think staff is on hand tonight, and they will talk with you before you leave the building. Next is Troy Selberg.
Good evening, Commissioners, Council, and Staff. My name is Troy Selberg. I'm the Chair of the Cabarrus Education Foundation. Helping me tonight is our Executive Director, Amy Goff. She's handing out a brochure to show you the success of the ARP funds that were granted to us earlier. The Cabarrus Education Foundation is a 501(c) separate from the district. We have 18 volunteer community leaders that help us gather monies and funding to help the students and teachers in Cabarrus County. The funding from the ARP grant was able to help the teachers and students in Cabarrus County through our Reading for Success program. It's where we take community leaders, train them, put them in the classroom alongside teachers, and do one-on-one reading with students. The third-grade reading level in the United States is critical. It is the turning point in which students find success. That turning point sometimes does not get met. If students do not reach a third-grade reading level, they are four times, they're, excuse me, they have a four-timed more failure rate of dropout. So these kids are dropping out. Our workforce here in Cabarrus County now shows that we need a ninth-grade reading level. We believe, talking to community leaders, that that will now reach 11th-grade reading level, given the technical jobs that are being brought to us. I'd like to thank you for the ARP funding that you've given us, and we would ask that you look at the application that we have provided to extend that funding, and more importantly, any unspent funding with ARP. If you could push that our way, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is Darrell Page.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Darrell Page. I live in Midland, North Carolina, and I'm here about the talk, from my understanding or rumors or whatever you wanna call it, about the reduction in the Cabarrus County fire tax. And the one statement I want you to go with in what I say tonight, Cabarrus County fire tax, do not reduce it. Property tax has gone up around 60%. The entity that protects that property is the fire departments. It doesn't seem logical to increase the tax on properties, then think about reducing the fire tax. This to me sends a message to the taxpayers that you want to increase the taxes on their property, but you're really not concerned about protecting those properties or their lives. As you all know, the fire departments are inspected on a regular basis by the North Carolina Department of Insurance, Office of the State Fire Marshal. From these inspections, each fire department is given a rating for its base, a rating for its PPC, Public Protection Classification. This inspection is based on numerous factors, of which includes the required equipment, the equipment condition, the equipment maintenance, which includes engines, tankers, layer trucks, and all the equipment on there, oxygen tanks, the masks, everything that protects the firemen. This rate also affects the property owner's insurance rates based on this rating. The fire tax is needed by every fire department to achieve and maintain the highest rating possible. Reducing the fire tax after a large property tax increase just doesn't seem logical or in the best interest of the taxpayers or the citizens of Cabarrus County. Thank you for not reducing the fire tax.
Okay, our next speaker is Judy Tally.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. The first thing I want to say on a positive note is every group that spoke tonight with their recognition and their efforts to help the people is really close to my heart. I'm a retired social worker, 42 years with nursing homes. So any money that you gave allocated to these nine, I believe it was nine groups that spoke tonight, is money very well spent. However, I'm also addressing the increase in the property tax reevaluations and assessments. I can't understand why such a decision was made without thinking, we're gonna take it? We're not gonna take this. I think we've made it very well known. You know, I just don't understand how something like that could be made. It's not even proportional to other increases that have happened. And a number of people spoke on the housing crisis and how hard it is to get housing. This doesn't help. We're both retired. We don't make the money we used to make. So I just don't understand that. And to me, it's cost a lot of money, first of all, to do the area valves and then have to have people available to redo them to lower the property tax assessments. That's a lot of money being spent, you know, having to correct something that we would never go along with in the first place. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wesley Honeycutt.
Wes Honeycutt, Midland. There was some misinformation publicly shared at the April 2nd work session that I would like to correct. Steve, you said we've had, for our last two regular meetings, multitudes of people coming in a very planned fashion, including applause and so forth, to talk about how their taxes are spent. As a recipient of some of that applause, I wanted to let you all know that I came to those meetings alone. There certainly was no coordination or planned applause. I came out of conviction. It cost me something to be here. My remarkable wife's at home with five kids. I'm here because you all won't tell the truth about things like the revaluation, which you could have delayed at least another year per the NCDOR reappraisal standards. You didn't because you wanted the tax money. Your hands were not completely tied, as you have implied, in half-truths or whole lies. After a presentation from Child Protective Services in which they highlighted concerns of increased homelessness, child abuse, and mental health issues, Steve, you implied that those of us opposed to our taxes increasing are unconcerned with these types of issues by saying, sometimes it's difficult for us to look people in the eye and say, are you telling me that you don't think it's important for children to have these resources in school regarding resources to assist with homelessness and mental health issues? As an adoptive father and someone who devotes significant time and money toward foster care, adoption, child well-being, I found this insulting. What can contribute to increased homelessness and mental health struggles? Life becoming increasingly unaffordable? What causes that? Things such as out-of-control inflation due to out-of-control government spending, increased taxes. Are you all surprised that there's a mental health crisis? People like you, Steve, spent the better part of three years as champions for mandates of forced isolation, forced masking. You supported and even added to the decrees coming down from Governor Cooper. Which group was forced to isolate the most and wear masks the longest? That's right, children. Your policies locked many of them in homes with their abusers. Long after some mandates were dropped, and many of you were going out maskless and free with your friends to restaurants and sporting events, kids were still forced to sit in school for several hours a day, distanced from one another, muzzled. You took away their sports and their proms and restricted their in-person interactions. You even put caution tape to block their access to playground equipment and parks. You don't get to say that I don't care about mental health because I don't support you increasing our taxes. While you were sacrificing their mental, emotional, and spiritual health in the name of protecting them, people like me were sounding the alarm. I'll leave you with a quote I posted in December 2020. As grown-ups, we are meant to be the calming voices, the wise and reasonable ones, saying to children, it's okay, everything will be fine. Don't be scared. Instead, now we growl at them, put the mask on, you're scaring us. It's completely backwards and one of the most absurd and disgraceful displays of cowardice I have ever seen. This pandemic will be over eventually, but those of us who sacrifice our dignity out of fear will not so easily get it back, and neither will our children be able to so easily recover from the psychological damage that our hysteria has caused them. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Chris Cranston.
My heart's breaking watching you guys violate men's rights in here. They're not breaking the law. Public servants, with your Freedom of Information Act, you guys are on public record. You can't shield each other like that. You can give each other trophies and do all that at the beginning, but you can't, unless we're breaking the law, these guys are law enforcement officers. They're not policy enforcement officers. Is my shirt too red? Am I too white? Like, whatever nilly-willy policy you guys, it's the law. That's what matters. Don't reduce these men to policy, your policy enforcement. That's not who they are. And you can't, unless we're breaking the law, you can't, no judge will ever, ever hold that up for a man saying some public servant's name. You're gonna have him kicked out for 90 days. It's embarrassing. I woke up at 2:00 a.m. this morning in Buffalo. I drove here 12, 14 hours it took me towing my dad's tractor, but I wasn't gonna miss my three minutes on TV. I want to be able to see my bald spot. You know, it's really important for me to be here, Steve. That's all that matters to me. It might be a petty reason for you to be here, but I organically came here because of my taxes, and now I can't leave because I want to keep seeing. I want to be at home right now, but I can't because you guys are totally violating people's rights. And then the thing, like, you're sitting here and tell me you, I have to listen to this? You give Eli Lilly accolades for private charities? You know what I get if I don't pay my taxes? I get an eviction notice. I don't get you praising me for choosing the charities that I get. If these guys are such great bastions of the community, why wouldn't they want to pay their taxes? Why wouldn't they want to give to the community? Why? It doesn't add up. You guys gotta stop this madness. I'm disheveled and I'm fragmented because I'm so tired, but my son is a math teacher. You guys want to talk about vaping and bad parenting? Guess who's the worst parent? Government. Government is the absolute worst parent. My son's a math teacher. He doesn't have time to keep your kid from vaping, Mr. Wartman. That's your job. You're the parents of those children. My son, his job is to teach your kid math. You guys want to spend some more money? Get some tutors. They can all wear shirts that say vaping is for dummies, but they need to be educating. They can't be in there just socially, like, they're parents. That's our jobs. And if you find children that need special help, then help them. You can't treat all the children like they have bad parents because there's some bad parents out there that didn't work for the black community when they were the strongest family unit in the '60s, and then the government started subsidizing single motherhood, and now they're 75% homelessness. Don't you, are you not paying attention? Did you not know that Ronald Reagan said, "We're from the government, and we're here to help," are some of the scariest words in the English language? You really believe those? You think that, oh, I'm from the government, I'm here to help. That's gonna, we can't stop the vaping. You're gonna get all this vaping? They're gonna go across the county. They're gonna go to another store. You can't even keep drugs out of the prisons. Don't spend all these resources on dead ends. It's not a good idea.
Okay, our next speaker is Yolanda Rushing.
Thank you, sir, for those comments. They actually resonated, and thank you for speaking on behalf of my husband. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I couldn't help but notice. I couldn't help but notice the lack of affordable housing for children, the lack of transparency, the lack of inadequate access to policies readily available. I just couldn't help but notice. But yet and still, we sit here and not be transparent with our community. If we were to be transparent with our community, I can assure you, a lot of these problems would not exist. I urge the Board of Commissioners, before you make decisions, before you implement policies, take the time out. Show the community the pros and the cons of the decisions that you make. Show them how it in fact impacts the community. They say, what is the state of our children? Well, I'll give you the state of my children, because right now, my children are facing anxiety. They have bitten their criticals, their nails to their cuticles. I can show you pictures of those. They are in anxiety at this moment. Why? Because they were improperly removed from a two-parent, well-loving home. I am a veteran of the United States Army. I have an MBA from Wake Forest. I have a bachelor's, though I double majored in human relations and women's and gender studies. My son is in the Spanish immersion program, and yet and still, despite the things that he is going through, he is still able to achieve his academic excellence. And you want to know why? Because of the foundation his parents built. But that foundation is being questioned because of DSS. And I get it, you don't want to hear their names. Well, to fix that, we don't need more social workers. We need more training, training on laws, training on policies, update our policies, form the board that needs to be formed within Human Services Advisory. Let the community know about these positions. Stop appointing friends in who you know. Let the community apply for those positions. apply for those positions. Let them speak for the people of this community. By the looks of this board, and this is no disrespect, you all do not know my struggle. You can't even relate to my struggle because you don't know me and you don't look nothing like me. That needs to change. There should be equal opportunity on this board and inclusion. So, I will fear not, but I ask you to look within your hearts and address this issue. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes all of our public comment cards that have been turned in, and we move now to our consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are items that were discussed at our work session two weeks ago at length. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'm willing to make the motion, but I do have a question, and this just may be a simple error. Under the first item for the appointments to the Community Child Protection Team, the attachments to that do not seem to correlate with the agenda item. I wanted to see if maybe I am looking at that wrong, or if indeed the attachments, because it says there should be a roster of that committee, and it looks like the attachments is a resignation, and then...
Okay, I have a roster.
Right, but that's for the Human Service Advisory Board.
Okay.
And the agenda item is for the Community Child Protection Team.
There are currently no documents for that one because it's being...
Okay.
So, there should be no attachments there.
Okay, because on, yeah, at the end of it, it says attachments, reappointment recommendations, roster, applications on file, so that should not be...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. With that being answered, I'm willing to make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to new business. First item on the agenda is restructure Department of Social Services Legal Services, and I think Dr. Pugh is gonna lead us through that discussion.
Good evening again. So, I was just going to review very quickly the slide deck that I presented two weeks ago at the work session, as soon as Lauren pulls that up. Just to remind you in terms of what the request is this evening, I will note that the request has altered a bit from the original agenda item from February, so now we are presenting you with two options for your consideration. So, in terms of the Health and Human Services, Social Services, legal support, wanted to just remind you kind of what that team does for us. Previously, we did have an internal legal team. That was 10-plus years ago, and then about 10 years ago, as you all know, we began contracting with our contracted law firm, which is Hartzell &amp; Williams. I believe this was mentioned in February, but just to reiterate, our current agreement with Hartzell &amp; Williams does expire in two and a half months at the end of June of this year. In terms of the affected programs and areas, they fall under three large buckets. Those three buckets are child welfare, adult and aging services, and child support enforcement. So, those are the three large social service program areas that are supported by our current legal team. You have heard these statistics throughout the evening, but just to reiterate, the ever-changing landscape of the Department of Social Services here in Cabarrus County, the numbers have increased exponentially over the course of the past 10 years. So, in the last 10 years, for instance, there has been an increase of 156% in terms of the number of children in custody in Cabarrus County, and in terms of our guardianship program, that number has increased by 110%. Our child support referrals have been relatively steady since 2017. There had been a lot of conversation in terms of the billing of the services and how much they were actually costing us, so I just wanted to kind of give you a breakdown based on those large kind of bucketed areas in terms of what the profile looked like from July 1st of 2022 all the way through June 30th of 2023. So, you can see the total billable amount for child support, child protective services, and adult protective services. That number at the bottom, the 411, 480, that is the amount that was billed to the county, but that does not include court fees and other ancillary expenses, so that kind of makes up the difference in terms of some of the numbers that have been disclosed before. Now, in terms of the federal reimbursement, those are the numbers we drew down from the federal government. So, I don't have that number up there, but I do have it in my notes in terms of the out-of-pocket expense for the county for our legal services in fiscal year 23 was about $188,000 roughly. And so, you'll see on the side there, I also allocated the percent of reimbursement we receive from the federal government based on that social service program. So, as you can see, we receive a higher percentage back from the federal government for child support enforcement-related legal services in comparison to the other two buckets, child protective services and adult protective services. The rate is roughly 50%. For child support, it's roughly 66%. So, altogether, when you factor in the numbers, roughly, we receive about 54% in reimbursement from federal government. So, operational considerations in terms of our current state versus the possible future state. Our current state is our legal team is not located within our offices, right? So, they are located off-site. We also have part-time support, and I want to emphasize that point in relation to how the numbers have grown exponentially over the course of the last 10 years, as I've highlighted before. And then it's also, it's a less efficient process, and it's more difficult to us to monitor in terms of accountability for the services. In terms of a possible future state, our legal team would be embedded with our staff, meaning there would be county employees, they would be housed in our buildings, and it would literally be a matter of our social workers and our supervisors being able to walk down a hallway and consult with an attorney in real time. We would also have full-time support in comparison to part-time support, which is what we have now. We also, this would lead to an opportunity for us to increase our efficiencies, which we're trying to do across the entire structure of the Department of Social Services, and then this would also lead to improved accountability. So, just wanted to highlight kind of what the norm is in North Carolina, because I know you've heard from a lot of different individuals over the course of the past couple months in terms of, like, do these specialists exist, right, in terms of lawyers or attorneys who specialize in DSS operations? And the fact of the matter is, they do exist. As you can see, this was a survey that was actually just done last month by the North Carolina Association of the Department of Social Services. They attempted to survey all 100 counties. 56 counties responded, and this was the breakdown. So, as you can see, more than half employ some type of legal support around DSS operations. So, what are the different options that are outlined for you on your agenda? So, the first option is the one that we originally presented to you in February, which would be the hire of two attorneys, a lead attorney and a staff attorney. The original goal was to onboard by July 1st, but obviously, we would push that back, should it be your will for us to move in that direction, and then gradually phasing out use of our contracted legal services for the Department of Social Services. One of the things that I want to emphasize is, even if the board chooses one or one of these options, we will still need to contract with our current legal provider, at least for a period of time, to ensure a seamless transition of service. The Option 2 Plan that we are presenting to you as an alternate is a graduated plan, where we hire one attorney initially, allow that attorney to focus very specifically on two of the three DSS programs, and those two areas would be child support and adult and aging services, and then we could reconsider hire of a second attorney after we've had an opportunity to kind of assess this model, just to make sure that this is the direction we want to continue to move in. And again, even with an Option 2, obviously, with an Option 2, we would continue then to contract with a legal, an external legal provider for child welfare services. So, these are just proposed reporting structures. This would be the reporting structure should you decide to move forward with Option 1, and this one would be should you choose to move forward with Option 2. And that was it. That's my slide deck. Happy to address any questions, and I also, if Evan is here, invite him to come up to answer any questions that you might have as well.
At our work session, I asked a question because Commissioner Mason wasn't there. He had wanted a team of the sheriff, the DA, and one other person to kind of meet, since those are the people that are involved with these cases. I was told that we would have an update tonight, so where do we stand on his committee being formed to get these answers?
Well, I can speak to what I know and what we have discussed internally, and should there be another plan moving forward, of course, we are more than happy to entertain that. The idea that we had brought up was to have a panel of external as well as internal members. Every panelist would have the same weight in terms of the rating of candidates, and so it would be a collective process. And then, obviously, in terms of the individuals that we selected outside of the county to serve on the panel, you know, open to suggestions and that.
Yeah, and I also did poll some of those individuals that Dr. Pugh's talking about, and so we have some, we had some different dates, and we couldn't get the large enough group together, so we're gonna send those back out again to try to make that happen.
And that is, Mr. Downs had mentioned that, you know, even if we proceed with action on this tonight, that that's still, you know, the process that we can take is with the panel, as it is suggested, or committee to help with that process, that selection process. And I'm fine with that. You know, we had had a couple of conversations about that, and I'm sure we'll have more of those after this evening, but I did have a question. I've got one quick question. Is, you said the, currently, we're spending about $188,000 locally.
That was in fiscal year 23, correct? Yes, sir.
So, now, how will that change with, let's say, Option 2? How will that change with Option 2?
So, that's a great question. It's really hard for us to ascertain exactly how much we would be able to draw down with Option 2, and I'll explain why. Because if we go with Option 2 and we just hire one attorney, there may not be enough work under the DSS umbrella for that attorney, to fill that attorney's full-time, right? And so, we might have to utilize that attorney in that sense to assist Rich as well as Evan with some other duties. If we do that, those duties will not be reimbursable.
Right.
The only duties that are reimbursable from the federal government are those duties that are associated with the Department of Social Services. So, for instance, let's say 60% of their time is devoted to DSS, and 40% of their time is devoted to other legal duties. We would be able to seek reimbursement for the 60% of their time.
Okay, so what's the purpose of hiring a full-time position if we do not have the workload for a full-time position?
We wanted to present multiple options for your consideration.
Okay.
Okay, commissioners, and I guess what you're saying is Option 2 was just the attempt to give an alternative.
Correct.
Even though it's not perhaps as financially feasible or as Option 1.
Again, it's hard for us to say definitively, because we haven't had in-house legal support for some time.
Right.
So, it's really hard for us to say exactly what the reimbursement would be or what the workload would be. But one of the things about child support, as I mentioned before, is our rate of reimbursement is higher, so we do, we are able to draw down 66% of those, of that time that is associated with legal support for child support enforcement in comparison to the other DSS programs, so that might balance it out a little bit. But again, it would just be kind of a situation where we are moving forward to determine whether or not, or how much time they are able to allocate to DSS operations versus time that they need to devote to other legal support.
So, with Option 2, if we're hiring a full-time position, and then we're also contracting as well, I would imagine it would not be the full contract that is happening now to offset some of that cost. So, it's not hiring a full position in addition to a full contract. So, what would the new, what would a contract look like with Option 2?
So...
The contracted portion?
We've talked about that roughly with Hartzell &amp; Williams. We haven't ironed out exactly the dollars, but to your point, it would be less. Their current contract, excuse me, their current contract is $200 an hour, so that's where we would start, and if you look at that for just child welfare, for just child welfare, it's somewhere in the 280, excuse me, $286,880 for last fiscal year is the hours that Hartzell &amp; Williams billed just for child welfare. So, that's significantly less than the $414,000 that was on the slide.
And so, so how would that, so would that basically offset the cost completely?
Pretty...
I mean, within, very close.
I'm not a great numbers guy. That's why I went to law school, but yes, it would, it would even out, and it would make it, it would still probably end up with some cost savings to the county, because the child support side of that, like Dr. Pugh said, is a higher reimbursement rate, and still, every dollar that we build for that is going to get re, well, the 66% of every hour that we get for that is still gonna be reimbursed. Yeah, we'll let the numbers guy talk.
So, the proposal, the alternative 2, my understanding is that came from Mr. White, and the proposal that I saw was roughly a reduction in the contract from $400,000 to $360,000. If we were to go with that, this would, alternative 2, would cost more money for the county than the current contract.
Okay, so now, this, that number that you just thrown out, about $360,000?
That's what Mr. White gave us.
Okay. All right, so now, this goes back to whenever this originally was brought up to us, and there was a discrepancy in the $100,000. Does that include, is that number reflected of these reimbursements?
Additional money. They're doing work for the school board.
Right, okay.
So, that's fines and forfeitures, money completely separate from this.
But that's not included in this $360,000?
Correct.
Well, in my opinion, I would like for us to explore Option 2. I think it would probably be the best, the best of both. We can see, you know, I was here whenever we had, I was here, whenever I was the county commissioner here, the first time, we had the in-house attorney, and it did not work out. It just simply didn't work out. And, you know, it was, there was a lot of problems, and they could not get fixed because it was a government position. And so, you know, I'm willing to explore that option again, as I said, because it, I think it probably had a lot to do with who was in that role at that time, and, you know, without going too far into it. So, you know, if we can find someone to hire and see how they can mesh together.
Sure.
Then I would like to see Option 2, but I would like to explore Option 2 and probably hear more numbers on it if there needs to be negotiations with Hartzell &amp; Williams of, you know, divvying up what roles and then what numbers come out of that, but that would be my opinion.
So, are you making that in the form of a motion?
Yes. So, I would move that the commission board would move forward with exploring Option 2 for our DHS legal services.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there discussion? Okay, hearing none. We will move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no.
No.
Okay, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move now to Item 2 from EMS, renewal of non-... Okay, we move now to Item 2 from EMS, renewal of non-emergency transport franchise agreement with American TransMed. This does call for a public hearing. We'll hear some explanation from Jimmy Lenz prior.
All right, thank you again, and Mr. Cook, if I mess up quoting this, please correct me. This is the first of, to accommodate state statute, correct, the first of two on consecutive months, so we will be back in May to read this agreement again. And I'll start with that. We've had a great working relationship with American TransMed for many years. Their current three-year term will be up the end of June, so the new one will go in place with the new fiscal year on July 1st. So whereas Cabarrus County regulates the provision of vehicles for the hire in Article 82 of Cabarrus County Code of Ordinance and North Carolina General Statute 153A-250, including franchises for non-emergency ambulance and services, and whereas those services have been provided by American TransMed according to the standards defined in Section 82-52 of the ordinance, and whereas the Board of Commissioners has held a hearing as required by Section 82-53 of the ordinance, and whereas based on information submitted by American TransMed and information submitted at the hearing, the Board of Commissioners made the following findings. A, the public necessity and convenience requires the proposed ambulance service. B, each such ambulance and its required equipment have been certified by the state as acceptable for the type of franchise requested. American TransMed and its officers and partners are responsible persons to conduct our work in the proposed business. D, only duly certified emergency medical technicians are employed as operators and attendants by American TransMed for non-emergency service franchise. E, all other requirements of Article 82 and all other applicable laws and ordinance have been met. Now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners resolves that the Board of Commissioner grants a franchise to American TransMed for the operation of non-emergency ambulance and service for the period of July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2027. Number two, the terms of the franchise shall include the following. A, a geographic boundary for this franchise shall be the entirety of the county. B, any change of ownership or management of American TransMed shall terminate the franchise and shall require a new application and the new franchise award. The franchise may not be sold, assigned, mortgaged, or otherwise transferred without the approval of the county and the finding of conformance with all requirements of Article 82. D, the terms of Section 82-57 of the ordinance shall be included in the franchise agreement as they shall relate to termination, suspension, and revocation. E, the Board of Commissioners authorize the county manager to negotiate the executive franchise agreement with American TransMed, not inconsistent with this ordinance after drafting or viewed by the county attorney, and it'll be approved after the second reading, which will be next month.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Lenz? Okay, hearing none, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone that would like to speak on this matter to the podium. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, that completes our new business. We move now to reports, and first up is to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various other boards or committees. Does anyone have an update? I know you gave one earlier, Kenny. None, and then we will open the floor for general comments by board members.
I have several. There was a speaker tonight that was addressing David Thrift, and they said that they could not get a phone call back, where we have, we're telling people, if you don't agree with your assessment, this is what you need to do. Are we following, are we following up to make sure? Because that man had to come tonight and take time out of his night to come try to get an answer, so are we following up?
Great question. I just spoke with that gentleman. We've set up a time to talk, and for anyone that's having issues contacting our office or getting answers, we just ask for some patience. We're responding to as much as we can, but we are not responding. Our focus is to talk to anybody that wants to talk to us, answer any questions we can.
And then, and then my second one is, we've had multiple conversations at our work sessions about this public policy, or the public comment policy, and I'd like to pull it up if we can, and I want to make sure that that's, that we're following our policy, because if not, then I owe those two guys an apology, and I'm not above sitting up here apologizing to somebody. But from my understanding, we sat in these work sessions, and everybody agreed that that was the route we were going to go. So I want to make sure that that's, that's the route we're going to go, because I saw several looks to kind of make sure, we talked about the names, but I'd like to see if we can pull that policy up and look. Because like I said, if I was wrong, I'm wrong, and...
Is the policy legal?
Is the policy legal?
Yes, excuse me, yes, it is.
I do, I did see someone step out, make some copies of the policy to be handed out to some of the, some of the folks that were involved.
I would say that the tricky part, so just addressing the employees, the tricky part is, when is, when is a comment about an employee an attack versus when is it a criticism? Now, we did talk about in the session, the work session some months ago, that it's a little bit different for you guys making the bigger decisions than for rank-and-file employees, but at the same time, there's got to be some sort of mechanism for the public to air their grievances against their government. So that's a fine distinction to make, but the other pieces of the policy, as I said in our session, are more time, place, and manner restrictions, and so it's a matter of moving along the meeting versus it turning into a, a attack against individual employees. So that's where the, there's a fine line. But as far as our policy, I mean, I would second Mr. Cook. I mean, as far as it's written, it's intended to be viewpoint-neutral and restrict more what people are talking, how people are talking than what they're talking about.
I was under the impression, specifically because of the issues that have gone on, we sit up here and take it all day long, it's fine, it's what we signed up for, but after we had all these work sessions, I was under the impression that specific employee names, not us, but specific employee names, because there's also a whole lot more to that story of other, other issues going on, that we were going to cut that off. And I know several of us looked, and so that's why, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
It's a very fine line, and I think the part that would be relevant, correct me if I'm wrong, Evan, is, is the second part of maintenance of order and decorum. As part of this requirement, speakers may not utter personal ad hominem attacks towards board members, county employees, or members of the public. Directing insults at individuals rather than discussing substantive concerns of public interest regarding a person's conduct or qualifications threatens the dignity and good order of meetings. Such comments are likely irrelevant and almost inevitably lead to a responsive defense or counterattack, and thus to argumentation that has the real potential to disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. I think that's what we experienced tonight, and although, now, if you just let it continue, you know, it's impossible to predict exactly how far it might go, but the formal complaints that have been issued to me have indicated instances of various activities naming individual employees' children's names, family members' names, things of that nature. Fortunately, I have not observed that here at this meeting, but it could progress to that. But that, that was the part, so did, Evan, am I correct that that?
No, I mean, I think that part speaks for itself.
Those were ad hominem attacks.
Right.
That's an Italian, I mean, excuse me, a Latin phrase that means you're attacking the person. That's what it means. That's why that was used in the, in the policy. And the policy is, the people think that because we have the First Amendment and free speech, that you have free speech in every forum, in every situation. That's not true. That's not what the First Amendment says. You know, the, the, the example they use in law school, and other people have heard this, you know, and it certainly doesn't apply exactly here, but you can't yell fire in a crowded theater. I mean, if you had unrestricted First Amendment rights, you'd be able to do that, but you can't do that, because it creates, can create a public safety problem. Well, under North Carolina law, there is a statute that applies to county government that allows this board to set a policy to control your meetings, and that's what this policy is designed to do, is to control the meeting and allow it to move on, and not have, you know, people come up and make, again, ad hominem attacks against employees or actually anyone else. And that's kind of what we were listening to, some of that, and that's been going on from some individuals for months, naming people, and it's always how bad they are and how, you know, it's not that they were, it's not talking about their qualifications or their conduct in an official sense. It's gone outside of that. And again, some of it that we talked about has occurred outside of the meeting that you were talking about, Mr. Chairman, where they've been talking about, you know, we've had employees that have complained internally because there's things going on on social media where they're talking about employees' kids. And so there's been some of that that wasn't in the meeting, but that we had to, had to address. So it's gone beyond just saying that we had a problem in this case, you know, and this employee was involved. So that's, but as Evan pointed out, sometimes there is a fine line to determine on which side of that line you're on, and when you're, when you're attacking someone who you feel is, you know, that's a county employee that you feel is, has not treated you correctly. So you can mention that, you know, but when it gets personal about that person, about that employee or anyone else, that's what the policy is designed to draw the line at that point.
Any other questions or comments on that item? Okay, we are still in general comments by board members. If anyone has anything they would like to mention? Okay, hearing none. We do not have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.